Welcome all to the March 5th, 2025 Planning Commission Meeting. If you would all please call to order first. Let's do our Pledge of Allegiance to give Nathan just a moment longer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We are going to go through a quick roll call. Commissioner Dewar.
Here.
Commissioner Metz.
Here.
Commissioner Jennifer Davis. Commissioner Morton.
Here this time.
Thank you so much. I am Janice Hexford. I will chair the meeting this evening. With permission from the commissioners, can we give Commissioner Packard a few more moments to join us? I did too. I did too. Roll call. Commissioner Packard. And we are all accounted for. Can I get a motion to excuse Commissioner Connor Davis from this evening's meeting? Do I, do I get a second? Thank you. So in our last meeting, do I have any, all of, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? In our last meeting, we have, because we are going to an AI format, we are hoping to be able to say, I, Commissioner Morton, excuse. It gets a little weird. But for the recording, it makes it better. So if you don't do that, I'm going to follow up, but don't think that I'm being redundant. So that was, uh, the motion was made by Commissioner Morton and seconded by Commissioner Metz. No. Dewar. No. Who seconded? No, this is for today.
Oh, today.
Who just excused it? Okay.
Commissioner Metz.
All right, so.
I told you.
That's okay. No, that's okay. So that's going to be, again, something that we're going to have to get used to. And it seems a little weird because you're talking about yourself in the third person, but it makes for easier minute, meeting minutes for our staff. So if we can try to work on that, and I'll try to remember. Okay, moving on. Do we have any guest business? I see none in the audience. Are there any guest notes from the, uh, anybody online? And guest business as always is opportunity for anybody to ask questions of the Planning Commission that is not included in our agenda. So seeing none, we'll move on to the minutes. Uh, we don't have those on the agenda. But the, uh, we do have some meeting minutes from our previous meeting. Were all of the commissioners able to peruse those minutes? And were there any additions or edits? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
I, Commissioner Packard, make a motion to approve those minutes.
And do we have a second?
I, Commissioner Metz, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? All right. We have gone through the, um, agenda to date. Again, keeping in mind that the minutes weren't here, we added those on. I do have a housekeeping issue. If you don't receive an email about the Planning Commission by Friday evening, if you would reach out to Dawn or myself, um, we're just trying to make sure that everything is going out cohesively. So if you don't see something, um, in your email box, please reach out. Okay? Thank you. Very good. All right. We are now moving on to the opening of a public hearing. This is going to be, um, uh, the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Docket Ratification. Uh, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
I, Bruce Morton, move to open the public hearing.
And do we have a second?
I, Commissioner Dewar, will second.
Thank you. We have the public hearing that is open. We turn the time over to you and have Principal Planner Levitan. You got a new Packard. Very nice.
Thank you. So David Levitan, Principal Planner. So we are here tonight, uh, for the public hearing for the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Docket. Uh, back at your February 19th meeting, we had introduced the docket, gone through the items, and now as required by the Comprehensive Plan, uh, as detailed in, in Chapter 1, the introduction. Uh, the Planning Commission holds a public hearing to allow for any public testimony, to provide any feedback in advance of providing a recommendation to City Council on ratification of the docket. So I introduce these topics, uh, these items. Uh, there's two map amendment proposals and three text amendment proposals, which were introduced on the 19th. So I'm going to keep it super high level. Uh, feel free to ask any questions. But, uh, we introduced basically just the, the plan docket basics, that it can be done once per year, that citizen-initiated amendments as defined, and the procedure established in the introduction of the Comprehensive Plan are accepted through January 31st. Uh, we did not receive any citizen-initiated amendments by the January 31st deadline. So these are all city-initiated amendments. Um, so don't really need to go through the process too much, but the docket was webs, the wet docket website was updated back in December. Um, tried to get some public notice out related to that. Was it, the items were introduced at your last meeting. Um, each item is required to undergo an analysis to demonstrate compliance with the ratification criteria, which are established in Chapter 1 of the Comprehensive Plan, which was just updated at the end of last year. Uh, so that's attachments 1 through 3 of your packet tonight for this agenda item. Uh, the Planning Commission does make a recommendation to City Council. Um, and just to clarify, this is just for ratification of the docket. There's been preliminary analysis for compliance with the ratification criteria, but nothing related to the approval criteria that will be needed for the actual Comprehensive Plan Amendment, which will occur later in 2025. So just a reminder, we do have the two map amendments. Um, and they both are, just to bring a couple of properties that were overlooked during the 2024 periodic update. Basically, we had intended to change the land use and zoning designations of all publicly owned properties, um, to change those to public semi-public. Um, and we missed a couple of those. So we wanted to just clean that up as part of the 2025 docket. So the first one is down, uh, just a little bit, uh, west of here on the north side of the lake. Uh, basically, there's a sewer lift station, sewer lift station 1C. It currently has a land use and zoning designation of waterfront residential. So as part of the docket, we are proposing to change both of those, both the land use and the zoning designations to public semi-public. Um, the Comprehensive Plan does call for our public properties to have those land use and zoning designations. And as noted in Attachment 2, uh, this does meet the ratification criteria. So we are recommending that this be included as part of the docket. Similarly, uh, for map amendment M2 is just north of here, uh, Fire Station 81. This is an interesting one. If you look at the area where the red meets the green, um, the southern half of the site currently has a land use designation of downtown local commerce. Uh, basically, the parking lot for the fire station in the northern half has a land use designation and a corresponding zoning designation of public semi-public. So we're just looking to clean that up, uh, to make all of that the public semi-public designation. So it, it already has the zoning for the entire site of public semi-public. We just need to change the land use designation of the southern two parcels. Uh, similarly, uh, the attachment 3 demonstrates that it does meet the ratification criteria. Um, and then there are just, there are three amendments, uh, which we went over at your last meeting. So the first is to basically update the city's three adopted subarea plans, basically updating some of the maps and some of the policy language to reflect updates that occurred, uh, as part to the land use element and economic development element, all the various elements of the Comprehensive Plan that was adopted back in October. So to make the subarea plans consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. So that's text amendment 1. Text amendment 2 is kind of which, uh, for those of you that have been on for a few years or more, we have kind of standard annual administrative updates. Uh, the most, we tend to update the introduction with kind of new updated demographic information. Um, and then kind of the most substantive one that we typically see is updating the capital facilities element to make sure that we're keeping our six-year and our 20-year capital facility plans up to date, basically rolling that forward a year, um, to cover, you know, the applicable six-year or 20-year period. Um, and then text amendment 3 is, um, if you remember, uh, we had discussed in, when we were adopting the periodic update, that we didn't do a major update to the parks element. And that's because we knew in 2025 that the Parks Department was going to be leading an effort to update what's called the Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan or Prose Plan. Uh, some jurisdictions have added in a T to make it the Prose Plan for trails as well. Um, but to update that plan and then basically to incorporate those changes into the parks element of the Comprehensive Plan. So Attachment 1, um, kind of goes over the ratification, ratification, uh, ratification criteria for text amendments. Um, and staff has determined that all of these text amendments are consistent with the ratification criteria. So this being a public hearing, public notice was required. That was published and posted on February 21st, um, and then published again on February 28th. Uh, did not receive any written, we have not received any written comments as of today. Uh, the project is categorically exempt from CEPA review, the State Environmental Policy Act, uh, following any oral testimony tonight. Um, if we have anybody cruise in at the last minute, um, the Planning Commission will have an opportunity to discuss and ask any questions about any of the items, uh, before making a recommendation to City Council on ratification of the docket. Uh, and then the City Council, it's a pretty quick turnaround. They'll be holding their public hearing next Tuesday, March 11th. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions online yet? Okay. Commissioners, questions?
Yes. Uh, looking at the waterfront one. Is it, uh, does the neighbor's dock interfere within the property, uh, over, and then water area?
Uh, there are some, yeah, there are some areas along there where the property lines are a little bit funky.
Yeah, yeah, that, yeah, it looks like it just goes right over the neighbor's dock.
Yeah, and there are areas where the property lines, when you have all of these layers of GIS data, they sometimes aren't exact. They can be off by several feet, but that's something that we can look into. I don't think it's, um, all that relevant to the zoning per se, but, um, it is something, if there are concerns about that, we can look at. But I, I have noticed that especially on some of these parcels that extend into the lake, um, and they don't always match, um, you know, the geometry. They go off at different angles sometimes, and it can be a little bit weird.
Especially curves like that.
Yeah, so I can zoom back into that one, but. Yeah, so. That's actually. They haven't really. I don't know why it goes that way, but we can look into that and whether there would be any impacts related to the new zoning. Um, it would be an existing use. Um, but Russ, do you have any concerns about that, or?
I did notice that they're here as well, but I think your response is all we can give tonight. And you can view it and find out if that does intrude on the city's property.
Normally, we wouldn't be like moving property lines over the water and, uh, but as long as you're opening the box and, uh, reassigning these things, you know, might as well fix. This is an opportunity to fix things. That's all. That's all my comment.
All right. Thank you.
Um, so I understand the rationalization, uh, the reasons for doing it all. Can you help me understand what are the actual, like, practical implications of these changes? I mean, that means somebody can jump off of that edge of the property and claim it's public swimming water? Like what? Um, in all reality, how does this really affect people?
For the, specifically for the part over the lake?
Both, both, both changes. What's the bill?
I mean, for the, for the, for the portion north of Lake Shore, which is where the actual lift station is, um, you know, it's basically just to align the use.
Sure.
You know, a public lift, sewer lift station with the applicable land use and zoning. Uh, for the portion over the lake, um, yeah, I'm not an attorney, so I don't know if it have it. I mean, it's still, I mean, it's technically public property, the way that it's shown here. It extends out into the lake, but then there is apparently a private dock that extends into that. I, yeah, I wouldn't really be able to speak intelligently to.
And what about the fire station property again? What are the implications of that?
Yeah, so the fire station is similar, that it is a public use. It's a public fire station. So instead of having that commercial land use and zoning designation, we just felt it was more appropriate and, uh, consistent with the Comprehensive Plan, which calls for all publicly owned parcels to have a land use and zoning designation of public semi-public.
And again, practical application. So I often, I think I often see cars parked there for the brewery across the street. Are they free to park there because it's a community park? Or are they not allowed to park there because that's designated? Again, what are the implications?
So for example, for a practical application, we had a couple of sewer district proper, uh, projects that came forward last year. And because they were located on residential properties, they had to go through a conditional use permit and a more extensive use, even though they were replacement of existing structures. So for public use, you should be able to easily get a, a permit to do something for public purpose. So that's a big thing. As to your question about the fire district's property, I, I can't speak for them in any arrangement they have or don't have with the brewery.
Okay.
Across the street.
So for most people, there's no real change here. It's a, it's a policy change as opposed to any sort of meaningful impactful change.
Yeah, it's, it's generally just for consistently with the Comprehensive Plan, which within the land use element calls for all of these parcels to have, you know, the same land use and zoning designations of public semi-public.
I would also just add that there's, obviously, oh.
Take a second.
Uh, this is Commissioner Jennifer Davis. Um, I would just add too that having the designation of public or semi-public doesn't necessarily equal right to public access. There's plenty of publicly owned property that doesn't have free, open, public access associated with it. So it's something to keep in mind.
Any other comments? I have one, but I don't want to. Do we have anybody else that wants to make a public comment? I would, um, just from my own experience, if you go further down the lake, we did a lot line adjustment, um, because we do stretch into the water. And it was, um, it, it didn't follow the build. It was following the line of the curve. And so we went through and spent some time and money making sure that it was clean. Um, more for anything than the liability of such. Um, if you have somebody's dock that may or may not be on your property, that may be something that the city may look into. Uh, so I would just offer up my experience in that it can be done. And it, it adjusted the line to follow the build. Um, are there any of the comments? I will go back in time. Commissioner Morton made the first comment. And then Commissioner Packard followed up with a second comment there. Um, Commissioner Jennifer Davis, uh, was third. And then I had my final comments. Chair Hexford. With that, uh, do we keep the public hearing open for these next couple of comments? Or, or, um, topics? Are we able to close the public hearing at this point?
Uh, this is the only public hearing, so. Yeah, you would, yeah, you would close it.
That was my impression as well. So I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
This is Commissioner Jennifer Davis. I move that we close the public comment portion of the hearing, or that we close the public hearing. Is that the correct motion?
Do we have a second?
Commissioner Dewar, seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we have closed the public hearing on the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Docket Ratification. Do we have a recommendation to City Council at this point? Or do we have any comments, discussions internal to the commission? We discussed this quite a bit last meeting. And so, um, I felt like we had ample time to absorb what was being said. And again, this goes in front of a public hearing next Tuesday. So this is not making it final. This gives the public another opportunity next Tuesday to speak in front of City Council. Anything else we want on the record? Hearing none, do I have a recommendation?
Commissioner Jennifer Davis, can I add one quick thing? I love to say when we're doing the docketing, and I said it last week, but I want to say it again on the record. Just for anybody watching this in the future, this is setting our to-do list, but the substantive analysis is going to take place over the course of the next year. So, um, it's great that the public has an opportunity to come before City Council and look at our to-do list and make comments, but there will be additional opportunities for public comment, um, on the substance going forward. Thank you.
So Commissioner Morton, I move that we, uh, approve the, uh, the, uh, docket as presented.
Do we have a second?
This is Commissioner Matt, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, thank you. We made it through the public hearing. Again, many other opportunities to weigh in on this. Please use them if you are watching us on YouTube in the future. Uh, we will move forward on, uh, number six, discussion items. We have two discussion items. The first will be, again, Principal Planner Levitan, introducing a developmental code update requirements for step housing.
All right, so I wanted to start by apologizing that the staff report didn't make it into the packet when it was first published. So this was on the agenda, there were no attachments to it. So it was basically just a blank space on the agenda. So I'm going to give an overview. Hopefully you've had an opportunity to read through the very brief staff report that we handed out to commissioners this evening. Um, and so I just, this is similar to the Critical Areas Ordinance Update Introduction that we did last meeting. We have a variety of different development code updates that are implementation items to the 2024 Comprehensive Plan. Uh, that's, um, Commerce has provided guidance on that. We have until the end of the year to complete. So, uh, step housing is one of them. So this came out of House Bill 1220 back in 2021, when cities, basically the Growth Management Act was amended specifically within the housing element, uh, discussions of the Growth Management Act. Um, and basically tasked cities with adopting goals and policies within their comprehensive plans and then developing code language to implement the Comprehensive Plan for different types of housing. So this is a little bit hard to read, but step housing stands for, the S stands for the shelters within emergency shelters. The T stands for transitional housing. The E stands for emergency housing. So there's emergency shelters, um, which are be, kind of very temporary in nature. And then there's the emergency housing, which, um, are kind of similar, but tend to be more indoor and more permanent structures. Um, and then the P is for what's called permanent supportive housing. And there were some discussions of that and some analysis of that that went into the Comprehensive Plan. So, um, that's what the step is for. And so basically, the Comprehensive Plan set the stage for the development code updates that we're now doing. Um, we were required to adopt goals and policies, uh, specifically policies within the housing element of the Comprehensive Plan. So we adopted four of those that talk specifically about emergency housing and emergency shelters there in Policy 3.2.4. Um, allowing permanent supportive housing and transitional housing in all zones where either residential uses or hotels are allowed. That's Policy 3.2.5. Um, and then calling for us to coordinate with regional organizations, with religious organizations, nonprofit affordable housing providers, to identify opportunities to provide this type of housing. It is a type of use that is difficult to provide at market rates. And so it does, it does rely on partnerships. Um, it, you know, whether that be from other government agencies or from religious organizations or nonprofits, it is something that is difficult to build. So partnerships are going to be incredibly important as far as providing the opportunities for these to be built. Um, and then one of the other items that was in House Bill 1220 is that we are not allowed to, uh, have impact fees for emergency housing. So we did provide the policy foundation for that in 3.2.8 there in the housing element. So where must step housing be allowed? And again, this is kind of small, but basically, emergency shelters and emergency housing, uh, cities are not allowed to prohibit them in any zone that allows for hotels. So within the city of Lake Stephens, that is specifically our commercial zone. So our local business, our business district, our central business district, and, um, commercial district. So that's basically the red, the pink. So a lot within our subareas where the red areas are, um, is kind of the easiest one to see, which is the commercial districts, the area in downtown, which is our central business district. Uh, some of the pink areas with the exception of, we have a couple of mixed-use properties on 20th and in other areas. Those are, are not required as far as now, based on our current permissible uses. But basically, anything that's red, pink, or purple, um, is where emergency shelters and emergency housing, um, would have to be allowed based on our current permissible uses table. And then when you move on to transitional housing and permanent supportive housing, um, those are allowed in any zone that allows either hotels or residential uses. So that opens up all of our residential districts as well. So waterfront residential, R4, R6, R12, and multifamily residential. So all the yellow and orange and brown, basically anything generally, except for the blue up in the northeast corner, and then the green, which are the public semi-plug, public properties. So that's the vast majority of the city. So, um, really, a lot of this process is going to be acknowledging that these are requirements, that they be permitted. There is allowances for the city to adopt reasonable regulations. Um, you know, for things like health and safety and physical development, uh, the physical environment. So that is what we're going to be working on, uh, over the course of the next nine months. So basically, this needs to be updated by the end of the year. Um, in general, the, the regulations, the processes and requirements when it comes to the process that you put them through can't be more rigorous than they are for other housing types, but there are local development standards and provisions that we can establish within the parameters of the way that House Bill 1220 was written to amend the Growth Management Act that we can adopt. So, uh, wasn't going to get into a lot of the details this evening. Wanted to introduce the project, um, talk a little bit about potential opportunities for public engagement. Um, we talked a little bit about at the last meeting, um, you know, what are some of the ways that we can get the word out? We have kind of three sets of topics in 2025 that are probably of great public interest. That's the streets and transfer, the streets and transportation that Christie is going to be talking about after this, the critical areas, which we introduced last meeting, and then housing. And it's not just the step housing. We're also going to be needing to make changes related to design review, to other types of housing. We are, uh, compliant with the ADU and the middle housing requirements that were adopted back in 2023, but there still are a couple other items that we need to update our housing code as part of the housing implementation work for the Comprehensive Plan. So we just wanted to introduce this topic tonight as we begin to work on the, uh, public particip, uh, Public Participation Plan, starting to identify stakeholders. Um, and a lot of cities and the county are working on kind of similar and aligned projects at the same time, so have had some good ideas for us. And so we can incorporate some of that. So we're going to be working on that. Uh, we'll obviously be checking in periodically with the Planning Commission and the City Council. Um, and so, yeah, as far as tonight, just wanted to answer any general questions related to step housing. And then if there are any thoughts on public engagement, we would welcome that from the Planning Commission.
Just, uh, this is Commissioner Dewar. She had a question. Uh, you had mentioned the need for partnerships, uh, between nonprofits and other organizations in the city. Can you expand on what the level of partnership, what a partnership would look like? And what level of commitment that would be on the part of the city?
Um, so, yeah, I mean, that, that's more for, you know, when there are specific divi- So, yeah, I mean, that's more for, you know, when there are specific development proposals. I mean, the city and even the county, it is difficult to get this type of housing built. It's expensive, land is expensive. So it's coming up with policy language. It's identifying kind of, you know, the most appropriate areas, doing some of that. It may be initial analysis. And then, you know, basically making, you know, partners and nonprofit agency, nonprofit providers and other agencies aware of kind of the city's regulations. So that, you know, if there is a documented need and there is a desire and an interest in doing this, that we've established a procedure. So I think a lot of the partnership, the initial partnership, is, you know, bringing them into the fold as we develop our regulations to make them kind of easy and streamlined, but also, you know, within the interest of existing residences, businesses as well, reflecting, you know, different perspectives and different opinions within the community. So that's kind of, kind of the initial partnerships. And then just relying on partnerships for the actual construction of this type of housing is, because we're not a housing provider ourselves. So it's, you know, developing those relationships and those foundations with other entities to, you know, to meet, you know, the documented housing needs that we have at all the different income levels.
Recognizing that there are budgetary restrictions on municipalities throughout the state, is there anything in House Bill 1220 that requires financial or property commitment on part of the city?
It doesn't, no, there's nothing that I'm aware of. I mean, I can look into it, but at first glance and based on my knowledge, there isn't anything prescriptive. It's similar to the growth targets wherein that we are required to provide the capacity and the regulations to allow for the reasonable siting and the potential provision of these uses within all of the zoning districts where they're required to be allowed. We are not required to make any guarantee, any financial commitments as far as any legislation that's currently out there. Not that there can't be legislation coming down the pipeline, but, yeah, there's nothing that requires us, you know, to get to that level of detail and really to chart out, hey, we're going to have this many units here and this is how we're going to pay for it. You know, there's generally a lot of this is at a higher level, a policy level, so that it can be built. You basically don't create a situation where it's impossible to build it. You create an environment where it can be built. But to be honest, I mean, in this economic environment, it's going to be difficult. And there's going to need to be state funding and, you know, the potential for federal funding is probably pretty limited right now, at least for the next couple of years. And so, yeah, we'll see where we go from here.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Morton. Are there any step housing in the city right now?
I'm not aware of any that, yeah, would actually meet any of the definition of, you know, either transitional emergency or permanent supportive. We have probably some housing authority properties that include some kind of wraparound services that might be considered permanent supportive housing. But I think they're generally just considered public housing as opposed to specifically designated as permanent supportive housing. So it's, it's an issue. And it's like when we adopted our growth targets and they gave us a growth target of about 400 permanent supportive housing units over the next 20 years, that's more than exists since Snohomish County outside of Everett, or the entire county outside of Everett. So.
So assisted living facilities wouldn't count as part of this?
Those would not, no.
Or halfway house more related to crime is supposed to just homelesses?
Yeah, so those are, you know, slightly different definitions. And I'm happy to do a little bit more research as far as whether that meets it. I mean, we've documented through the comprehensive plan that we have the zone capacity to meet our growth targets, both for emergent, you know? That was the whole point of the, you know, the updated comp plan that you were required to have your public hearing on last month was because we'd originally gotten guidance where we could just do a qualitative analysis of emergency housing. But then we got updated guidance from Commerce where we needed to go back in and show that, hey, we do have, you know, capacity for 400 or 500 beds in the city. We have much more capacity than that. But even as part of that quantitative analysis, it was basically, do you have the zone capacity? Not where is it going to go? And so, yeah, happy to do a little bit more research on, you know, what some of our, you know, some existing uses. But when you look at different inventories, you know, that the county is prepared as far as what cities currently have on the ground, we basically show zero.
Any other questions?
I just have one quick one. This is Commissioner Matt's. So one of the things that I know King County does is they open up a lot of the public buildings that take place as the emergency shelters and transitional, is that allowable under this act where we could look at the same types of?
I think there would need to be some commitment. I can, I would probably need to reach out to the city attorney to get kind of a more definitive answer on that as far as, I don't know if those go towards the number. Again, it's, it's not so much that we need to show the capacity, we need to allow them if somebody chooses to build them. We need to have regulations in place that make them fairly easy to go through that process. And so it's not so much about, hey, are we going to be able to put it through, you know, allow them through different parts of the city? It's more, are we going to allow them? And is the process easy to go through? And is it more stringent than what it takes to, say, build a condo development or a new subdivision? If you're making, you know, basically the state law says you can't make them jump through hoops that don't exist for other housing types.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we will move on. So again, Commissioner Dewar, Morton, Packard and Matts.
Thank you.
We will move on now to discussion letter B, our proposed revisions to LSMS 14.110. This is the concurrency, this discussion where we started last meeting. And we'll turn the time over to the planning.
All right, good evening, planning commission. This is a follow up from your February 19th meeting. Doing a little different format this evening, I'm pulling up the attachments. To get started, I did want to follow up with what Dave had mentioned, apologies about the staff report. We do have a technical glitch in Civic Plus for discussion items. We are going to work that out to make it a default that the staff report actually gets attached without us having to go in and manually adjust it and make it happen. So next time you will have full attachments for your discussion items. So to follow up and summary back on February 19th, Transpo provided recommendations for us for concurrency. As I mentioned at the meeting, attached this evening, you have the staff report before you, which I'm essentially summarizing now for you. And we have a recommendation from Transpo. I'm showing the memo on the screen. I thought it'd be better that way, that way you have it in full context. They have a recommendation of eight items here. They discuss the need to provide an annual concurrency report, consider collecting concurrency reviews, and altering our tracking and methodology process. And they go into some extensive details. And along with including a matrix to track our last and fourth subarea plan for the city, which is the industrial area. We currently track concurrency for the other three areas within the city. And in addition, they make a recommendation about evaluation of thresholds for the city and updating our traffic analysis guidelines, along with using concurrency trips per person, not per vehicle. So that's a change to reflect multimodal. And in addition, their last recommendation is to develop and clearly implement a concurrency certification process, which we now do through a staff report, that they're recommending an actual separate document for concurrency. So staff has read through these eight items. I have summarized it down below in a to do list of six items. So I just wanted to let you know that that's in your packet. And so some of the next steps that will be coming forward to you and that we're working on with Transpo is that we're going to work on how to develop an actual annual concurrency report that we will use to monitor level of service throughout the city and the impacts on the city's capital facilities. And that will also reflect any changes in our capital CIP six-year and 20-year plan list. The second item is to adjust our traffic impact zones. We have three of them within the city. We're going to look at the methodology for that. And they're going to help us with some of the technical tweaking of it to make sure it matches our city's comprehensive plan. So we'll be working on that. Actually, they're starting working on that right now. Then lastly, as I mentioned, we will come up with a concurrency tracking matrix for the last area of the city after we develop the Lake Stevens Industrial Center SubArea Plan. That was on our work program for this year. We're hoping to get to it. That's the plan. It might be one of the items that gets postponed to 2026. But as you are aware, it is on our 2025 work program. We're also looking at setting a concurrency evaluation a little higher for traffic studies. And we will be making adjustments. We have two handouts we use for developers. We have our overview of basic traffic study requirements. And then we also have our developer's impact mitigation worksheet. And so both of those include some methodologies and some frameworks that developers have to fill out and follow with their development application. They submit that to the city and we use that to determine what impact fees they will provide and also what mitigation they will provide. So Transpo is going to be helping us adjust and change those to reflect the changes in the comprehensive plan. Lastly, the concurrency tracking matrix, we'll do an annual report and that will line up with our multimodal standards that we adopted this year. So we have to incorporate that in throughout our code, through both the streets, parking, and also our impact fees to reflect that. So that's the concurrency update for this evening. And now the fun part comes into the code updates. Those are your other two attachments. There are strikeout versions. I will have to say, these particular code changes aren't super meaty. Let me see, I'm just going to slide this up here. If I can activate this. Let's see if we can get this. Hold on. Yeah, let's see. I'm leaving the webinar. Sorry, I don't mean to leave the meeting. Let's get back and track here.
We have them in our packets, don't they?
They do, they have them, you have them in your packet. All right, we're going to try this an old fashioned way. We'll go back, reshare. So the first one we are going to go through is your concurrency, which is the chapter 110. Do you have that in front of you? And actually, I'm going to try and pull it up here real quick. Makes it just so much easier. One item that Dave mentioned that I realized we need to add into exemptions is the emergency housing as far as for impact fees. So that's going to be a quick change. And I have it up, so we're going to pull this back up. Get going here. All right. Okay. All right, we're back in action. Going to blow this up so we can see it a little bit better. Okay, does that look good for everyone up on the screen? Okay. So you can just take a brief look. We'll just go ahead and cruise through. There's not a whole lot of extensive changes for this one. We start out, this portion of the code, this has actually been deleted. This is actually included in one of our worksheets. So it was redundant to have it in the code also because it's spelled out and required within the worksheet for the developer. As Dave mentioned in his presentation, there are certain development proposals that are exempt from providing impact fees. One item on here that should be on here is the emergency housing. So I will make sure that that gets added back in there. So here's another list. As far as exempt permits, we went ahead and added in retaining walls and walls, simply because those are exempt and it's a separate permit we issued. As far as transportation and projects that are required for concurrency, we went ahead and, let's see, eliminated, we have single family homes. You'll see some revisions in section 10. We went ahead and made some text changes to be consistent, saying all development applications shall include concurrency for the following review projects. And then there is a list of them. And then the exemptions that they specifically include, single family residences, duplex, ADUs, et cetera. So we've clarified that language in here. And we included in specifically in the code, the threshold of 25 PM peak hour trips. If you've ever done a development, a single family home generates about 0.98 trips. So it gives you an idea of a short plat of nine homes would likely be exempt from providing a large traffic impact analysis, unless for some reason, the city was aware that their level of trips would impact an intersection, then we would require it. But other than that, they would be exempt. And so we wanted to clarify that for the developers within the code. Moving forward with the level of service standards, most of this is some text change and some clarification to be consistent with the comprehensive plans, along with the subarea plans. So it's a lot of verbiage change. And I don't know if you've had time to read it. If you are ready to move on, I will slide up. It's clarification as far as thresholds goes for each subarea, those text changes were made. And then the level of service, this area, this is redundant from comprehensive plan. So this information has been removed from the code because it's included within the comprehensive plan. Then as far as requirements, as far as traffic reports and methodology, this section has been cleaned up to be updated to reflect the new level of service adopted within the comprehensive plan. So all the criteria that you reviewed last year during transportation and the CIP portions, this has been included within the code. And then we added clarification for concurrency testing for developments and make it consistent with the current ITE manual. And that is pretty much about it for this section of the code. And with that, Russ, Dave, I don't know if there's any high points that you wanted to mention before we move on to traffic impact fees.
Okay. Do we want to stop here for any questions?
Absolutely.
Let's, let's take a break, let you breathe. If there's any questions on that portion of the proposal. Yes, please.
Commissioner Jennifer Davis, I had a couple of questions. One had to do with the recommendation to have an annual concurrency report, which I think would be a great way to reach out to the community. There's, we've heard a lot of concern over the years about traffic and intersections and transportation. So my question about that was, is there, is there, are we far enough along to be talking about how we could make sure the public knows that exists? Will it be available on the website eventually if you do implement that change? Or would there be a, I don't know, I just think it's such a great tool, but I'm not sure, get it out there.
No, literally, it will be a great tool. It is needed and it will help the city as far as assessment of what we need to be aware of as far as capital improvements to keep our facilities up to date for future development and growth. First of all, we do need to develop what it's going to look like in our tracking system for it. Once we have that, I do believe like the annual report, like the other ones that we have on our website, it would be made public and published, along with an update to planning commission and city council, et cetera.
Great, I think that'll be really good.
It would help with the comprehensive plan update also.
Yeah, yeah. And then my second question was, it had to do with the concurrency, the recommendation that the consultants made about the concurrency tracking process for areas outside the subareas.
Correct.
And please tell me if this is not the right time to even be talking about this. But I was thinking with respect to the SB 5412, and it's on page 17 of 35 of our packet. This idea that local agencies will likely be required to adopt SEPA exemptions for projects consistent with the comp plan. Um, I just was wondering if you, again, please tell me if we're gonna talk about this in detail later, but how, what staff is thinking about the transpose recommendations for this? It's a, considering this is a big change to have certain exemptions for SEPA exemptions. Do you, are you, you're feeling good about the consultant's recommendations for how to tackle that?
I do, because we currently do have SEPA exemptions and thresholds within our code and our subarea plan that we have, and those are actually built in and we do track them currently. So as far as the ones outside of the subarea plan, I don't know, any thoughts on that one? If we would incorporate that in?
Well, I was just, yeah, and I was just gonna know, we've already adopted the high, you know, back in 2021, we've, we adopted the highest categorical exemption threshold. So you can do up to like a 30 lot plat, a 60 unit multifamily residential development and be exempt from SEPA already. And so I, I think some of the recommendations, I mean, I think they're good, but a lot of the, we don't have a whole lot of huge parcels left. So most of our development is going to be infill development that is already SEPA exempt. They actually have to go through a slightly more rigorous process in the subarea plans because they still have to get their planned action certification because we are required to evaluate those impacts cumulatively. And I think that's where some of their recommendations on the concurrency and on the analysis tool and on the tracking tool will be important because if you have one nine unit subdivision, it might not have a huge impact. But if all you have left is acre to two acre lots, and that's all that we see over the next 10 years, the cumulative impact of all those one houses going to nine units starts to add up. And so I think that this is, you know, good recommendation and this is really important work, especially for a community like us that's exhausted most of our greenfield development and really only has smaller infill lot development available to us.
And that's why we're also looking at, you know, is 25 the appropriate threshold for PM peak? And that's why if we do pick that threshold and not something lower, we do want to make sure to monitor it so we can look at it on an annual basis instead of every five years. Any other questions from the planning commission? And we can always come back to this because there will be other related topics on it that tie into it. And last week we had, or back in February, we had a pretty good overview of what the proposed changes were going to be. Just tonight, you're seeing the actual strikeout version.
I have a, a question. And again, if this needs to come up at a different time, when we met with the folks that put this together, there were a couple intersections that were missed off of that evaluation, one being South Lake Stevens Road and Machias. And in reading through this, the level of service at intersections, and it says signalized intersections, and I suppose, I mean, that's a stop sign. So perhaps it doesn't apply. But the delays have to be at a certain level to trigger something.
Right.
And the delays are there now.
They are. And in fact, we have discussed this with some particular current projects going on and about the proportionate share of impacts that that development will have to do to bring that intersection up to, up to the level of service, or they need to pay their proportionate share based on the trips generated from their project. So as an example, one of the developments off of Machias Road, the trips from that development are impacting that intersection. There was a traffic impact analysis done with that development. The developer will have to pay their proportionate share to contribute to improvements to that intersection to assist in bringing it up to level of service. That's where the tie-in comes in to, to make those adjustments on a site specific basis. Is that your question?
Somewhat. So, and I think that Commissioner Packard was talking about this at a previous meeting, but at what point do they quit paying? And at what point do we start seeing something happen there? You can't take a left onto Machias.
Sure.
From South Lake Stevens.
They do have, they do have opportunity either to make improvement and/or contribute to it. And obviously, if the city doesn't have adequate funds to add to what the developer provides, because that money goes into a traffic impact fee fund, which goes to fund our six-year CIP. So then the city has the responsibility to use those fees from developers or go out and seek funds to assist in bringing that project as a capital project for, to get the intersection improved.
Okay.
And you'll see that at a lot of those intersections. And that's a great example. That's a perfect one right there.
Well, I'm, I'm glad that you think so. I was a part of the meeting last night about a different traffic discussion and was discussing that intersection as an example today with people in the community. And my concern being we're only beginning to see growth there. And I don't want there to be, it's becoming dangerous. And when John Spencer, Mayor Spencer, back in the day, saw the same thing happening at South Lake Stevens at Davies, he, it was brilliant, made the simple choice, put stop signs up, which cost how much money? And it completely changed the experience from getting from 20th down to the lake. So something as simple as that would make a huge difference without, and, and I, I completely agree, they should pay the fees to be able to build there. But when does something happen? And are we making this harder than it needs to be?
I would say no, because we've had opportunities where it, it is appropriate to do the common sense approach and put in a stop sign. And the developer is required to do that. And so this process here, I'd say it's not making it more complicated. It's just refining the process on the proportionate fee that the developer has to pay based on their development. Whether it includes a stop sign, a stoplight and/or fees, et cetera.
But can the city, not influence, can the city mandate? This is what this intersection needs. You're adding to the traffic flow there. Can the city then step up and say, we're not just talking about fees, something needs to be done?
Uh, yes and no. So when you do a concurrency review, it is a legal concept that you need to have nexus and proportionality. So we cannot require a developer who has, say, tripped it over by one trip, pay for the entire reconstruction of an intersection that could be a multimillion dollar project. There's not proportionality. So that's why we would use fee collection as a way to do that. Also, when we develop the six and the 20-year plans, those are intended to capture all of the intersections through the traffic analysis like we just did, which included these intersections that are now on that 20-year list. So we know there's deficiencies. And as we collect the impact fees from that zone, then they get highlighted and moved up. So it is part of that 20-year planning cycle. I know that that doesn't help immediate needs, but as far as the city's intervention, no, we can't expect a single developer unless it's a developer of a huge magnitude that, say,
Costco.
doubles the size of an impact to an intersection, then absolutely, you know, that becomes a viable option for them to do the entire repair. But if we have several small businesses contributing, you know, five, 10 trips, that, that isn't fair to ask them to burden the cost of that whole improvement.
Okay. And I don't think that anybody's expecting one of those projects, but there are multiple sizable projects going on in that area right now. And, and again, that's a great example, but there are many. I understand. That just happens to be near and dear to my heart, but I am waiting at that intersection longer than what the requirement is right here.
Sure. And, and just so you're aware, staff is aware, we do keep an eye on the level of service of the intersection. So as development happened down in the off Machias and 20th area, you'll see there's four or five developments down there, right? We happen to know, working with the developers, that several were going to come through the pipeline at the same time. So staff requested of their traffic analysis engineer to make sure to include in their traffic impact analysis, not the impacts of just one of those developments, but all of them that were coming through. That way we could get the cumulative impact on the intersection at one time. So it's helpful for staff to have a concurrency tracking matrix and to have those tools and to have pre-application meetings and to be aware of what's coming down. That way we can ask the developer to assess appropriately, get the appropriate fees and the impact sooner rather than having tick, 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 tick. As, as you're mentioning, it's better to assess impacts all at once if you know they're coming.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, let's move forward.
Okay, next riveting topic is traffic impact fees. So once concurrency is determined and someone is required to pay for their proportionate share of trips, how do they pay that fee and what would they pay? That is what this section is about. And so starting off in here, this section, I would say there is not a whole lot of meaty changes to it. A lot of it is text changes to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and new terms that we're utilizing to be consistent. So you'll see the public street system is completely swapped with transportation facilities. As you will see, traffic is replaced with multimodal trips throughout the most of the chapter. And that is a lot of the changes here. So we also talk about exemptions after the purpose of the chapter. Exemptions, as we've talked about earlier with concurrency, we exempt rezones, comprehensive plan amendments, and also emergency housing and several other items. Going into the service areas, there is some verbiage change to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. We also talk about boundaries of which the impact fees will be charged. They need to match up with annexation areas. So as we annex areas, those will be automatically included into the TIZ zone, which is shown here on the next page. Because that's a big deal when the city grows and we annex areas within our urban growth area, as we've talked about before during the comprehensive plan process. As those developments happen, what fees do they pay as far as parks, schools and traffic impact fees? This is the older traffic impact fee map. It's broken up into four traffic impact zones, or three traffic impact zones, excuse me. This map will be updated. And the rest are text changes here. If you look through your packet, there's a lot of text changes. So just kind of sliding through those. Then as far as when we get to how the cost impact methodology is calculated, this is really outlined in the city's traffic impact fee cost basis for the city. It's about a six, seven page document. It's not included here in your packet this evening. That methodology was included within the code. To reduce redundancy and having to update it in two places, it's been eliminated from the code and it's literally just in the guidance document. So that's why you see all the strikeout text.
And another thing I'd like to point out about why we've removed this from the code is it is administrative work and when it's codified, it can't change easily with the, the times. And being administrative, we can be more proactive when we need to make adjustments in the way the formula is calculated and it's not going to take several months to a year to, to make those, those modifications. So that's another reason that it's in there. And likewise, we're going to take down the traffic impact map from the code and that will go in this supplementary document as well as administrative guidance document on how our methodology is formulated, et cetera. And we'll be doing the same thing with our parks impact fee as well, just because it, it gets very cumbersome. And in this case, as we went through this last update, we identified some pretty big discrepancies in what was created in this document that, that created some shortcomings for the city on some fees they should have been able to collect by the way this methodology was created. So anyway, we're just hoping it becomes a little bit more fluid and we can make those adjustments as needed as a policy document.
But don't worry, nevertheless, you'll have plenty of code update amendments still coming to you. Sleep better tonight. Okay. So as we move forward, the rest is text replacement for terms to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Just sliding through here. And I really think that that is, that's the excitement for the traffic impact analysis. That's why I didn't do a PowerPoint for it tonight. I did feel the strikeout version would be easier for us to go through. So with that, any questions from the planning commission on the traffic impact fees? Any thoughts? Have you had to pay them before? Hmm, okay. Some people have had the pleasure.
Actually, can I? Uh, this is Commissioner Jennifer Davis. So this is gonna be so naive sounding, but I feel like I learned something tonight in that I always sort of assumed as just a member of the public that, that impact fees were earmarked for changes to happen as projects were, were in development, sort of what Commissioner Huxford was talking about, like things are happening on Machias, now there's an impact. But is it, is it, did I learn tonight? That the money goes into kind of a central fund and then the decision about what projects happen over a six or 20-year period, that's really a public policy decision that budgeting at the budgeting level with council.
Correct.
So, got it. Okay.
As, as funding in need basis, I would say.
Yeah, and maybe a little more nuanced way to look at that is the traffic impact fee, that's what pays into your bank that you establish the global citywide transportation plan on a case by case basis during the development process, because we have to look out six years. Can an application be concurrent within a six-year window? Then we are looking out and if they can't, that's when we start talking about assessing additional fees on top of their impact fees to get to that proportionate share or have them make the improvement. Or we say you can't move forward with your project until it's concurrent.
Right, right. And it's the proportionality that kind of feeds into this because the, if there's going to be public, a public component to funding, then that, the city may not have that on hand. And so then it has to be budgeted over a longer period of time. So, okay.
So traffic impact fees are one of the, or concurrency for traffic is the only item that a project can be denied on. Essentially that or environmental impacts. Usually that can be offset, but traffic is, is it. And I like to look at it as a step process on how you feed the bank, as Russ mentioned, is that you have a project, you have their impact. They either build or they pay a fee that goes into the, the city bank for capital projects. It goes into the big 20-year pool and then you either have need and funding, and then it gets bumped up to the six-year. That's probably
Checking account.
Yeah, and that's probably, yes, exactly. And that's probably the easiest way to look at it if I had to do a flow chart for it, if that helps make sense or frame it a little bit better.
And my comment was simply that there might be some simpler ways to some there, there are some simple fixes. And I understand that there's been a lot of focus on the north end of the lake and roundabouts and, and such. But those of us that are newly annexed in at the south end are bearing the brunt of all of the new growth and have had zero invested in that end of the lake. So that was why I keep bringing up that area. So any other comments from you?
No, I want to say thank you for your questions and your input this evening.
And are, did we cut off any discussion from any of the other commissioners? I don't want to keep anybody from asking a question. I think we'll be revisiting this again.
We will, yes. Probably methodology might be coming next your way.
Well, riveting, yes.
Be prepared.
Stop, really stop. No, I'm just kidding. Okay, moving on. Uh, let's get some commissioner reports. Commissioner Connor Davis is not with us this evening, but sent a, an email to staff. And if you would, please, can we put that on record?
Yes. He said, Lakeside Books has eagerly awaited approval of a sign permit.
Lakeside Books has eagerly awaited approval of a sign permit in order to open their doors to the public. From my understanding, there have been no changes to the interior or exterior of the building. I would urge the city to work with the owners to expedite the process.
Thank you. I'll make a comment about that as well when I have, may have my moment. Uh, Commissioner Dewar?
Uh, no comment this evening.
Commissioner Packard?
Uh, just, I, I participated in the city council meeting yesterday. There was a, I guess, one of our city, our planning commission members, my understanding is, put something online and that generated quite the, uh, conversation. So there was nobody there in the room to, uh, to, well, there were very few people in the room actually last night, but apparently people are very invested and curious to see what happens with that 116, 116, 117 couplet. Um, and then the other thing I just wanted to mention, uh, as a fallout of our joint city council planning commission meeting, there was conversation around planning commission participation in the city council retreat. And they were talking yesterday, if, do, do I remember correctly that that was a, an item?
Yes.
So they were talking yesterday about the, uh, agenda for that city council retreat and just wanted to make sure that our city council liaison remembered that that was a potential action that came out of our joint meeting.
I guess, is there interest to any of you coming down and attending, participating in the report?
And this is
We're adding actually the agenda sort of allowed, so if, uh, if there's topics to be discussed, if you have a schedule to attend, we could, uh, Thursday.
It is, um, April 24th, and it's a one-day event, from what I understand.
Yes.